Okay, City Commission meeting for August ninth will come to order, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Tonight we have Rusty Banks with First Baptist Church here. Thank you so much for being here tonight to lead us in the invocation. And Commissioner Gault, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards. Everyone stand.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to come before you and open you guys up in prayer. Let me just say first, as part of First Baptist Church, we appreciate all the work that you guys do for our city. And we know it's a lot of hard and tedious work along the ways, but we appreciate all that you do, and we continue to try to lift you guys up in prayer.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you, Lord, for the leaders that we have for our city here in Paducah, Lord, not just the ones that are sitting up here with our commissioners and our managers and our mayor, Lord, but even our law enforcement, our fire department, our EMS, all of those, Lord, that are out doing their daily duties, Lord, our physicians and nurses and all of those, Lord, that are taking care of our community, Lord. We're thankful, Lord, that you have given us a part in what you are creating, what you are doing, Lord, in the city, Lord. I pray, God, that you be with Mayor Kayler as she leads the city, Lord. I pray, God, that you give her conviction for the things that are right for the city, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for each and every one of these commissioners that are also present here, Lord, as well as our city managers and all of the other leaders that were there in our city, Lord. I pray, God, that as they go through and make decisions for our city, Lord, I pray, God, that you be with them. I pray specifically for their families, Lord. I pray, God, that you be with them as well, Lord, as they are away from them, as they spend many hours away from, Lord, I pray for protection for their family, Lord. And I thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be a part of what you have already started, Lord. And I just pray, God, that you be with the decisions that are made here tonight, as well as the decisions for the future of our city, for it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So, tonight, we have swearing in of our new police officer, Chief Barnhill.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. I asked Jordan Murphy if he would please come up. And Judge Tim Coltonback is here to do the swearing in. Jordan is 28 years of age, was a homegrown candidate for us that we brought back here after being gone for a few years. He attended Christian Fellowship School in Benton. He's a recent graduate in 2009 with a bachelor's degree from the University of Louisville. We won't hold that against him. But shortly after that, he was hired by the Louisville Metro Police Department in November of 2009, has and has been an officer with them up until now. He is joined by his wife Kelly, daughter Tegan, that's back here, in a pretty little dress, and Jordan's mother here. One of the reviews by the current supervisor that was overseeing, Mr. Murphy, made a comment that I wanted to bring to you all. And his statement was, in the background phase of the investigation, was that an amazing officer, and this is what his quote was describing him, "He is an amazing officer with huge potential." And obviously, that's what the Paducah Police Department is looking for. We are out there seeking the best of the best, and we think we have that here in Jordan. Judge.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth? That you faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of a police officer appointed to do the police department according to law? Do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you, the citizen of this state, have not fought to do with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight with deadly weapons? Nor have you acted as a second to carry a challenge? Nor aided or assisted any person thus offended, so help you God. Right.
And once again, congratulations, Chief Barnhill.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I'll take the opportunity here real quickly to thank you all. Appreciate your support, appreciate the city manager's support day in and day out. And I would not have been recognized for that award and at that level if I didn't have the outstanding staff that I do. So, they make my job, although it's tough enough. They make it much, much easier than some other cases in other cities. So, I do appreciate them, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well said. Commissioner Abraham, you had the minutes?
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for July 27th, 2016, City Commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We're going to our appointments. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Oscar Gamble as a member of the Board of Adjustment to fill the unexpired term of Johanna Rhodes, who has resigned. This term will expire August 31st, 2017.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Oscar Gamble as a member of the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Albert Parker as a member of the Municipal Housing Commission. This term will expire July 22nd, 2020.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Albert Parker as a member of the Municipal Housing Commission.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Mike Stone as a member of the Paducah McCracken County Industrial Development Authority Board. Furthermore, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Derwin Ursery as a member of the Paducah McCracken County Industrial Development Authority Board to replace William Joseph Jones, whose term has expired. These terms will expire March 25th, 2020.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Mike Stone and appointing Derwin Ursery as members of the Paducah McCracken County Industrial Development Authority Board.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Rosa Scott and Phyllis Clymer to the Civic Beautification Board. These terms will expire July 1st, 2020.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Rosa Scott and Phyllis Clymer as members of the Civic Beautification Board.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, you have a motion?
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Notice of Cancellation for Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah for July 26th, 2016, and August 2nd, 2016 meetings. Certificate of Liability Insurance for AST Environmental. Date of Conveyance with Brad and Ann Wallace for 626 Boyd Street, 800-818-820 and 832 North 7th Street. Quick Claim Deeds with W. David Denton for 1001 and 1009 Harrison Street. Communication Services Agreement with McCracken County Fiscal Court for 911 Dispatch Services. Contracts for Service. Market House Theater, Paducah Symphony Orchestra, Inc., Paducah Tillman High School, tornado league football, Yaizar Arts Center, National Quilt Museum, Paducah Film Society, Doing Businesses, Maiden Alley Cinema, Paducah Community Concert Band, Upper Town Heritage Foundation, River Heritage Museum, Doing Businesses as River Discovery Center. Brooks Stadium Commission, Community Scholarship Fund Report for July 2015 through June 2016. Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for June 2016.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Under municipal orders, Commissioner Rhodes?
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner.
Hello.
Any questions?
We had a good employee retire recently.
We did. Kathy Grams is noted on here, and at the very top of the list, the first name on the list, Emmy Midkiff is her replacement, if Kathy can be replaced.
I think Emmy is a Paducah native moving home? Is that right?
Paducah native, that her, I believe her husband had been living in the Lexington area, I want to say, and I know her husband got a job here, and relocating back to the Paducah area.
Good.
Yep.
Great. Any questions for Steve? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Department of the Army and the City of Paducah for work provided or performed prior to execution of a project partnership agreement for the Ohio River Shoreline Paducah-Kentucky Reconstruction Project in association with Floodwall Pump Station Number Two be adopted.
Second.
All right.
Mayor Commission, this particular memorandum of understanding, you recall Linda Murphy and several others came down from Louisville, giving an explanation of why this was necessary. This is the, I guess, instrument that helps us move forward on that, independent of them, to get Pump Station Number Two underway.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number Two to the memorandum of understanding between the Department of the Army and the City of Paducah for work provided or performed prior to execution of a project partnership agreement for the Ohio River Shoreline Paducah-Kentucky Reconstruction Project be adopted.
Second.
Mayor Commission, similarly with this Amendment Number Two, you had a previous MOU for Pump Station Number Nine, this will allow us to move forward with it as well.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the city's planning department to submit an application for a community infrastructure fund grant in the amount of $1,014,500 from the Delta Regional Authority for the Floodwall Pump Station Number Two Rehabilitation Project, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents relating to the application be adopted.
Second.
Mayor Commission, obviously, we're looking for any outside resources we can to help us with these projects, as they're large expenditures, and if there's any questions you might have with this grant, Cheryl Chino has processed the application for that, so if you have any questions, she's here for your questions.
Just go get it, Cheryl.
I'm working on it. We're requesting $1 million to actually apply to the project, and then there's a $14,500, that's a rough estimate number, for administration costs that's due to the purchase add if we are funded, so that's the request for 1 million.
Are you fairly optimistic?
I have, you always ask that. I don't have a feel for this one, because this is a brand-new program through the Delta Regional Authority. So, it is specifically designed for community infrastructure, as well as flood-related infrastructure. So, the project is a good candidate, based on the guidelines, but that's the only thing I can say about it, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
That's good. Thank you. And we were not aware of this opportunity a few months ago when we were visiting with you all, so this does not rule out the possibility of also applying for a community development block grant.
No, it does not. Actually, what I'm hoping is that we can have those two funds work jointly to fund the overall project, so hopefully we'll have 2 million that we can apply.
That was a million more than we were talking about in the workshop a few months ago, so this has been a great find on their part, and keep our fingers crossed.
And we'll reapply for that in the spring, is that right?
That's correct. The round usually opens in April, so I'm assuming they'll hold to that same schedule.
And get those surveys filled out.
We're getting closer. If you come in this week.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Ordinance is adoption, Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed final subdivision for Ridgewood Villas Condominiums Phase One, accepting the dedication right-of-way of Villa Ridge Drive, accepting public utility easements, and authorizing the mayor to subscribe a certificate of approval on the plat. This ordinance is summarized as follows. An ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed final subdivision for property known as Ridgewood Villas Condominiums Phase One, accepting the dedication right-of-way of Villa Ridge Drive and public utility easements. In addition, the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to subscribe a certificate of approval on the plat.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 1 2016 John Deere 544K wheeled loader for use by the Engineering Public Works Department Solid Waste Division, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the finance director to pay the total sum of $155,492 to ERB Equipment Company for the purchase of 1 2016 John Deere 544K wheeled loader for use by the Engineering Public Works Department Solid Waste Division in compliance with Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2016 Case 590 SN backhoe loader for use by the Engineering Public Works Department Street Division, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the financial director to pay the total sum of $112,988.60 to McKeel Equipment Company, Incorporated, for the purchase of a 2016 Case 590 SN backhoe loader for use by the Engineering Public Works Department Street Division in compliance with Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance.
Did I miss you? I'm sorry, I missed Carol.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carol.
Commissioner Gault?
I wasn't paying attention.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 1 2016 Case TR-310T Ford Rubber Track Loader for use by the Engineering Public Works Department Street Division, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the finance director to pay the total sum of $51,498.71 to McKeel Equipment Company, Inc., for the purchase of 1 2016 Case TR-310T Ford Rubber Track Loader for use by the Engineering Public Works Department Street Division in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Now Commissioner Rhodes.
Okay, I move that the Board of Commissioners, well, there were two, two rubber track. Anyway, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 10 cubic yard Tomcat Satellite Sadloader mounted on a 2017 Ford F-550 chassis for use by the Engineering and Public Works Department Solid Waste Division, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah authorizes the finance director to pay a total sum of $100,014.71 to Municipal Equipment Incorporated for the purchase of a 10 cubic yard Tomcat Satellite Sadloader mounted on a 2017 Ford F-550 chassis used by the Engineering Public Works Department Solid Waste Division in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Sounded so excited, Alan.
He loves saying chassis.
Well, I didn't have to.
chassis, chassis cab. Or chassis cow, strip chassis.
We have three ordinances for introduction, and we do not vote on these tonight. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving the appropriation of funds for purposes of engaging Federal Engineering, Inc., to perform consulting work for City of Paducah 911 Communication Services Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves and authorizes the appropriation of the second installment of one-half the funds necessary to engage Federal Engineering, Inc., to consulting work for the City of Paducah 911 Communication Services Department in planning, designing, and providing implementation assistance in the replacement of the current 911 system infrastructure, including a public safety radio wireless communication system, a 911 telephone system, and a computer-aided dispatch system. A copy of the ordinance in the form of the basic document for such transaction will be on file in the office of the city clerk.
Second.
How appropriate that that's laying here. Finally, we are bringing to you the consultant contract to move forward with the process of starting the replacement and assessment in needs for the replacement of the 911 equipment that we have. You remember that you authorized half the funds previously, what you had before you authorized the other half of the funds, as well as authorization to initiate contract for us to get started. Be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
We just call them federal engineering instead of federal consultant?
Sure.
I just think it sounds better.
All right. I don't think there are any questions.
All right. Thank you.
We need to move forward on it. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah accepting a 2016-2017 law enforcement service fee grant award for operation of a one-year DUI enforcement program by the Paducah Police Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Justice Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts grant in the amount of $7,396 through the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for a 2016-2017 law enforcement service fee grant award to be used by the Paducah Police Department for operations of a one-year DUI enforcement program, and hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto.
Second. Chief.
Good evening again, Mayor Commission. In front of you, you have this, an acceptance of the grant award. I will tell you that there is no match obligated to us by this grant award, and totaling over the last four years, we are about the 50,000 mark that this grant has provided funding for the enforcement actions of our officers, so it's a pretty nice grant to have to offset some of that cost and burden to us.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter Six, Article Two, Section Six dash three-three Issuents Standards in Section Six dash forty License Types and Fees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter Six, Article Two, Section Six dash three-three entitled Issuents Standards in Section Six dash forty entitled License Types and Fees, which regulate licenses to sell alcoholic beverages for the purpose of providing for the issuance of non-quota type III retail drink licenses to distilleries and bed and breakfast businesses in accordance with recent amendments to KRS 241.010, 243.0305, and 243.086, enacted pursuant to the passage of Senate Bill 11 during the 2016 regular session of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
Second.
Do you have any questions about this at all?
That makes a lot of sense.
Tammy, could you summarize a little bit of what this will allow?
Well, basically, what it's going to allow, due to the Senate bill being passed, it's going to allow distilleries and bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast that are permitted through the state, they have to be permitted, they have to do a transient room tax to make sure that they are a bed and breakfast that's through the state. Anyway, they will be able to sell distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverages during the week.
So, they can't do that now?
No, they cannot do that now.
But the new law allows that?
Yes.
But they do have to pay the transient room tax for the bed and breakfast?
For the city to approve an application for a bed and breakfast, the bed and breakfast has to prove to us that they are paying the transient room tax.
Does it impact y'all?
Yeah.
Welcome, we're happy about your business, too.
Thank you. We are, too. Thank you very much.
You got any questions?
Thank you.
Very logical.
Okay, contracts for service? Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for service with the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council for specific services, will include services for Entre Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Greater Paducah Economic Development Council in the amount of $250,000 to be paid in equally quarterly allocations of $62,500 for performance of its services outlined in the contract. Further, this contract will include services for Entre Paducah in the amount of $50,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $12,500. This contract shall expire June 30, 2017.
Second. City Clerk? We vote on these tonight or not? We vote on these tonight or not?
No, we're just introducing these.
All right. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. for the Community Scholarship Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Community Scholarship Program. This contract shall expire June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Second?
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. for the two locations of the Paducah School of Art. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The funds will be used for operational expenses which shall include but not be limited to utilities, repairs, and other operation, operating expenses for the two locations of the Paducah School of Art located at nine oh five Harrison Street and nine one nine Madison Street. This contract shall expire June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Second? Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Paducah Area Transit System for public transportation services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for public transportation services for the Paducah McCracken County area. This contract expires June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second?
Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services with the Greater, uh, my fault? I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Luther F Carson Four Rivers Center Incorporated for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Luther F Carson Four Rivers Center in the amount of sixty-three thousand two hundred, three hundred and twenty-five dollars to provide extensive youth performance scheduling, continuing their tradition of Class Act Series. This contract shall expire June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Second? Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport for providing general aviation and air carrier services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars payable in quarterly installments of twenty-seven thousand five hundred each for providing general aviation and air carrier services to the citizens of McCracken County and surrounding region. This contract shall expire June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Second?
City Managers Report?
Thank you Mayor. For about three weeks now, we've been in the process of early stage of the effort to implement our new system-wide software, which is a huge, huge undertaking as we have indicated. We brought in Michelle Smallin as the assistant to the City Manager who began about three weeks ago. She came to Paducah from Alatha, Kansas along with her husband Jim. I've asked her to come here tonight to share with you her observations of the first three weeks in her position as project manager of that project because it's, it is, uh, it's huge and I would like for you all to have an understanding of how it is impacting staff time and resources during these very important stages of, of determining the implementation part of it. So, Michelle, if you would please give us a little summary of what, what you've experienced so far.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor Commission.
Aye.
So, um, as the City Manager mentioned, this is a very big undertaking and it's a multi-year phased rollout and there are some big goals with this software, I know you're all very aware of it, to enhance some of our operational efficiencies within the city and also improve our customer services for our residents and businesses. So, I'm happy to announce that the project has officially started. We had our kickoff on June twenty, or July twenty-eighth. All departments were represented, Tyler was on site. It was a really nice kickoff and a really appropriate way to start such a big undertaking. So, we're about a week into our first phase, which is the expenditure side of the finance, so kind of budget, purchasing, accounting, all of those pieces. And I think it's important to note that in order to achieve the goals that I just mentioned, it's important we take full advantage of the functionality of the system. So, Tyler helps this through, helps us through this process, but it has a huge impact on our staff because they are the subject matter experts. So, as each phase is implemented, our staff evaluates and refines every single business process that the module impacts. So, even though we're already a week into, only a week into this process, this has already occurred. Finance and IT have already had kind of multiple day-long meetings to get this up and running and off the ground. So, I would think so far, so good. We've been happy working with Tyler, who's the vendor, and me personally, I've been really impressed with the departments. They really know their business and are excited for the opportunity to improve the services we provide and the way we provide it. So, it's really going to take a tremendous amount of work from staff, but it'll be well worth it in the end.
I saw IT leaving today. They look like they'd been to school.
Yeah. We had a few long meetings today and last week, but it's a little overwhelming at first, but take it piece by piece and we're really working through it.
And how long will this take? The total rollout and the process?
Sure. So, it's about forty-five months. This first phase is a year long, so our go-live date is next summer for the finance piece.
Just for the finance?
Yep, just for the finance piece. So, coming up after finance, we have some general billing, um, some business license type things, so more on the revenue side is the next phase. The third phase is for code enforce, uh, code enforcement and some GIS. The next phase will move into property tax billing, then into HR and work orders and fleet and facilities, so it's a nice mixture of internal and external processes that will be rolled out over a number of years.
And the point's been made that the staff effort takes place alongside the continued provision of services. So, I know, for example, the finance office, I don't know how many staff hours have been spent just in this week or week and a half, but quite a bit, and things continue to function in, in the finance office. So, that puts, you know, some strain on the departments that are in the review and implementation mode, but I think everybody has a good understanding of that or suit will and are focused really on the end game and as Michelle said, the improvements that the software will allow us to make. And one of the things that's kind of neat about it too, and I sat in on just a little bit of some of this, is sort of some discovery that takes place along the way of what it is that maybe we can tweak here and there and, and change and, and get some additional beneficial outcomes even in addition to what the mechanics of the software will allow us to do. So, there's, there's a fair amount of operational review that takes place with this as well, which is kind of, in a sense, kind of forced by it, but it's, it's a very good thing. It causes us to look under the surface in some respects and I'm sure that we'll make some decisions along the way to, to make some changes that are even a little bit outside of the software itself. Would that be a fair statement, Michelle?
Absolutely, and I think we found that those discussions start to happen right away because when the phase starts, it's, the first piece is really looking at how you're doing business, so you can get it into the software and then kind of do testing closer to go-live. So, we're finding that those discussions really happen right up front because you have to figure out how you do business, how do you want to do it better, what can the software help us do. So, it's, it started already.
Yeah, in fact, I, I happened in during one of those discussions. I'd say it was fairly robust, so I was impressed by that. They did on something pretty quick that, well, maybe there's something we can do differently or change or tweak to get better outcomes. So, that was, that was neat to see as well.
Yep, yep. The departments are very engaged.
Good. Thank you. Any Commissioners comments tonight?
Tomorrow, first day, Paducah City Schools are in session, so backpacks and crease khakis and all wide-eyed bunch of freshmen coming in. I think we have about two hundred and fifty freshmen coming. We had ninety-five students transfer to Tillman from schools around, so everybody's excited about tomorrow, first day. It's nothing like the first day and the last day. Everybody gets excited.
Mayor, can I make a comment about my, the board I used to serve on before I became a Commissioner, I was on the airport board and we just gave Barclay Regional Airport a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I thought I might put that in some kind of perspective. Bowling Green, Kentucky has not had air service in forty-four years. We've had air service since nineteen fifty-one. And Bowling Green has finally, through state and federal money and local money, has generated enough cash to entice Contour Air to come to Bowling Green to fly twenty-nine seat turboprop to Atlanta twice a day for a week, I mean, per week and once each Saturday and Sunday, and then there could be two flights, one Thursday, one Sunday to Destin. And it took, I guess, a lot of shoving and pushing to get that to happen, and after forty-four years, Bowling Green joins what we've enjoyed in Paducah for seventy-five years. So, sometimes I think we need to maybe be thankful of what we have and it's nice that the city can, can help support our, our air service here. I think one of the challenges Bowling Green will have, not only is it a small prop jet plane, but when you fly to Atlanta from Bowling Green, you then have to go through bag check-in because there is, Contour Air has no interline service for bags with the major airlines flying out of Atlanta. So, good job to Richard Roof and all the employees and all the board members at Barclay Regional. Thank you.
And Richard is a real treasure. All right. Thank you. Okay. John, did you want to speak tonight?
I'm John Brown. Good evening.
Hello.
I'm here on the behalf of Silent Brigade Distillery to ask the city to consider package sales for our distillery on Sunday. And the reason is, is we're going to be part of the Bourbon Trail and we're going to have tourists to come in on the weekends and on Sundays also, and we want to be offer, are able to offer our packaged liquor for souvenir for the tourists that come in. We're not asking for sales by the drink on a Sunday, just our packaged sales for souvenirs.
I mean, and I know you all have been working on that effort to, to get on the Bourbon Trail and, you know, we've had a resurgence of interest in Paducah with the bourbon and with the Brian Shimwell and, and his group as well, the Bourbon Society. So, when do you think that would happen, John?
Probably about this time next year. It'll get closer, but we just wanted to get the ball rolling on it and, you know, we want to be able to do that just the same way as Purple Toad, you know, is able to sell their packaged wine the same way on Sundays now.
Okay.
You know, John, the first time I went to the Jack Daniel Distillery in Tennessee, and I, and this is sometime, I was struck with the fact that it was in a dry county and they could not, under any circumstance, let you taste what you just spent an hour licking at. So, this makes complete sense.
It sure does.
I mean, it just, it's basic marketing and it's exciting that we'll be on the Bourbon Trail. It'd be great. Look for the brown sides.
Yep.
So, what would we need to do? Just amend our ordinance standard?
Yes. We have to amend our ordinance.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. You have a beautiful place there. Thank you. We don't have an executive session tonight, so meetings adjourned. Thank you.